This now is a chance for the council to have a conversation among ourselves. It is not a process where we talk with the audience. So please, whether you really like it or not like it, to be heard, we ask that you reserve your judgments and again, not be judgmental, let people have their say up here. I have asked for this to be brought up, so I'm going to make a couple of brief remarks, and then I want to hear from the rest of my council members. First off, we can't talk about this if we're not in a public setting unless only one other person is together. So we don't know how we all feel about this. It's against the law for more than one of us to talk to somebody else about a project we're going to vote on. It's called the groundwater. So, we don't know how each other feels about this, and so we're going to have that conversation. So, let us go through that process. This first came up, and I wasn't on council back then, some 10 to 12 years ago, a conversation. It arose out of the tragic death of a young woman who was the daughter of a council member. I don't believe he was there when he was a council member. And the conversation was that there wasn't anywhere nearby for people who died here in the Valley of Newberry. And so the conversation occurred and there was an ongoing, and I wouldn't say there was consensus, but I would say that there was support in San Ramon in 2005 for the concept of looking for and establishing a cemetery somewhere in the Tri-Valley. Again, I say it wasn't a consensus back then, but there was strong support. There wasn't a lot of clarity of what the cemetery might look like, and that process has come forward. There was no EIR available back then, we didn't know what the impacts of the cemetery would be on the area. And so over this period of time, some things have happened, it's matured into a thought, now it's started to crystallize in terms of what it looks like. The imprint, we have a much better idea of the impacts it's going to have in the area, both visually, what it will do to ridges, how much soil might be moved around. We have a much better idea what it does in terms of the impact of the water table out there. And that is something which is probably of most concern, in fact, the EIR, that was talked about by several speakers, that the language was more than significant impact, that it would have a real impact, in fact, half the water we need out there. And those folks who live out there, there are a few here I see, the Newman's, Rappi's, and others, live from year to year in dread of when the well's going to go dry, and people have truck water in. So that's important. Keep in mind, in the conversation, this is not in San Ramon. We don't have the ability to say yes or no to this project, but we can be advocates one way or another. And right now, we are advocates on record as supporting the cemetery. When you come to today, it's clear to say that there is no longer a consensus in San Ramon. I think the best you can say there is divided opinions. There are people who strongly like the idea of having a local cemetery, and there are those who don't like the idea of having a local cemetery. So the consensus used to have in San Ramon no longer exists. I think the other thing from my point of view, is having seen the impact it's going to have on residents who may not be in San Ramon, but who are our neighbors, and I consider the Newman's and others our neighbors nearby, that we want to make decisions, or at least encourage things to happen which are good for all of us. And for those reasons, I ask that we have this hearing and talk about this resolution. It's also that why I want to encourage us to both withdraw this resolution, and by the way, I don't want clapping, let us all talk about having a resolution. I'm going to ask for the resolution to be called back, and I would also encourage council to look at a resolution saying that we're no longer in support of it. So, with that being said, anybody in the council like to make some comments, and we have this conversation now for the first time? I don't have a board showing lights, so you've got to just let me know if you want to say something.
Phil?
I would agree with that. First of all, the mayor's never gotten a round of applause for entering, ending public comment before, so that's an interesting change. I want to first of all, thank the community for coming out in such a large quantity. The number of speaker cards actually is more than the number of seats that we have in our humble city hall at this point, so I think it speaks to the level of interest in this. A couple of things that I'd like to point out, what's changed since this resolution was originally put forward? First and foremost, the applicant has had to actually come forward with facts and figures about what in fact he's interested in doing. And the notion of a cemetery in a lot of people's minds might be some quaint roadside set of graves, and that's clearly not what this is. If one were to look at what San Ramon's requirements are, you're not allowed to tear down ridge lines to build homes, much less, with a few exceptions, much less for permanent homes, shall we say. What's also become apparent is California finally woke up at some point in the recent past to the dangers of the depletion of our groundwater. And we became the last state of the union finally to actually regulate and monitor groundwater a couple of months ago. It took the most significant drought in our known history to bring that about, but nonetheless, that is what's come about. What's also apparent is that, what also happened is that Measure W was passed in 2010, reaffirming the urban growth boundary, so that cemetery project was not going to become part of San Ramon, probably ever. And the public overwhelmingly rejected an urban growth boundary breakage effort in Dublin just a month ago. We've had other urban limit line debates as well in the last 10 years, all either, all at least reaffirming urban limit lines, if not strengthening. I view this as an urban development. I think it's, I did not think it was a good idea 10 years ago. What's also happened is that we, thousands of people have moved within a stone's throw of where this development is proposed. We also have people who not only live there, their livelihood is there. And that's quite a bit different. The Newman's can't pick up and move their farm. The Erleks can't just say, oh well, we'll sell the ranch, we're cool. They have significant investment in this. And the people who have an investment in this overwhelmingly aren't interested in seeing this happen. I also think that the way one studies traffic about a funeral procession is quite a bit different than my normal commute to, I only have to go to Oakland, I thought I had a long commute, but apparently I get on a pike or compared to most of the folks commenting tonight. But I think that funerals do have a right of way. And they also have to hang a left on Camino Tass, so they come down Windermere and they're going to hang a left, and then another left. So it's probably 20 minutes of impact everywhere they go. I've been in large funeral processions, and I've been involved in two eighty being shut down during funeral procession. So I know what they're willing to do. And I also firmly believe that there's more than enough inventory of grave sites, I believe there was in 2005, but what's happened since then, the Diocese of Oakland has expanded its offerings, there's a mausoleum underneath the cathedral, there's a lot, and what's also happened is communities like Pleasanton have decided to make their cemetery more efficient, if you will, by putting in mausoleums, which is where the world goes with this. This is where the city, what the city of Vancouver does, it's what San Francisco essentially did 100 years ago, and moved it well out of town, or moved the folks into staffs. That's what happens. And I don't think this is, I don't think this passes muster from an environmental standpoint. I don't think it makes sense from a cultural standpoint to a lot of folks. I honor the dead as much as anyone. My family is buried in a pioneer cemetery in Oregon, so I, and they had a good sense to put it quite a ways out of town, by the way. So this is an idea whose time has come and gone. I think that's fundamentally what this is. One other point, the city of Livermore never supported this. So it was not a consensus of all the communities around here, the city of Livermore did not support this. So I would support the mayor's requested actions. I would suggest we put together a letter to the county saying that we, that the city of San Ramon does not support the concept of a cemetery in the Tassahara Valley, and that we lay out a number of points as to why we do not support it.
Thank you all for coming out. Some quick points here that I have gleaned from this. Doorty Valley first of all, has grown in such a way, just in the numbers and the demographics in a way people never imagined when this was planned out, and that's just a fact. It has exceeded expectations. And so what we have seen in many areas are impacts to our schools, to our traffic circulation system, to our infrastructure, to city financing in ways that I think we're coping well with, we're doing well with. This idea that in 2005, a group of decision makers passed a resolution in support of something that may have sounded like a good idea at the time. For me, this comes down to water. I represent the city of, the council on the Tri-Valley Water Council. And first, I'd like to say as an aside, to thank you for all of you who are actively conserving water as Zone 7 ratepayers. Your water conservation efforts have been recognized by the agency, they're quite outstanding. We need you to keep it up, and as we all need to. And I think this is the biggest thing, when I go through this resolution of 2005, this resolution number 2005-81, there's a lot of wheress's here, and I'm going to pinpoint one that I looked at and said, you know, I just don't think we may have got it right here. And it says, whereas the development of Creekside Memorial Park is consistent with the character of Tassahara Valley, I would disagree with that point, and as presented, is expected to have minimal impacts upon cumulative traffic growth within the Tri-Valley, and minimal demand for other services. Now, as I see it, water and sewage and stormwater drainage, you have to build infrastructure and connect it to existing infrastructure. And as noted in our staff report, none of the water providers, none of the infrastructure providers that are necessary for this to take place, have said that they will provide the necessary services for that. So you are very limited, extremely limited, and given where we have gone in the last 10 years with regards to water delivery system in the state of California, the water delivery system within the Tri-Valley area, water is the big deal. And let us not forget that we have over 2,500 housing units yet to be built in Doorty Valley. Is there a need for a cemetery? I think there's a good rationale, both for and against on the numbers. Cemeteries are a public good. I think that they do serve a public good, that they are part of human history for some strange reason, since the beginning of time, people thought it was a good idea to bury those who died. But this location is clearly not it, because of the lack of services that would be provided. Water resources are extremely strained. I think that this is a project that probably sounded good, but now that you're getting the facts about the size and the shape and the needs of this, it leaves much to be desired as to whether or not it would be the proper fit in this area. This is a resource conservation issue in many ways, not just with water, and that's a big concern. As was mentioned, we did cede our right to a local control over this land area with the defeat of Measure W in 2010. In talking to folks off to the side, there was a little bit of surprise. I'm not sure that's common knowledge to you all, as it's been allayed here, and I think hopefully you're realizing that. We will take the steps tonight that will be evident to you in terms of where do we stand on this issue. If the county board of supervisors, or should I say the county planning commission, could decide to pass this, to accept this project, and we would have no say to override their decision, except for the county board of supervisors to call it for review. So, one of the last gentlemen who spoke, talked to you all about going to municipal governments in this area, talking to those elected leaders, and also making contact with the county board of supervisors, that would indeed be very good advice for you. I think I do agree that this council should move to rescind Resolution Number 2005-81, and to, one of our misses tonight is to provide direction to our city staff, and that would be to have staff draft a letter of non-support for this project with the issue cited this evening.
Mr. Perkins?
You'll have to excuse my raspy voice, I'm getting over a cold, but I felt it important to be here tonight. I'd like to address some of the issues and comments that were brought up. Mr. Eddie Lee brought up about San Ramon benefit and residential benefit. This would not gain any direct monetary benefit for this, but there is potential general benefit to having the services provided. Now, cases have been made that the services are provided elsewhere. It's kind of like, in some cases, whether you want to go to Home Depot or you want to go to Lowe's, once in Dublin, once in San Ramon, they both provide benefit to San Ramon residents, just a matter of how far you want to drive. But a lot of decisions concerning land use and projects are not made on direct benefit to either the city or the citizens, though that is often part of the consideration overall. There was a question about notification, you weren't notified about it. Proposed developments that have not been approved are not likely to be part of any notification process, but land use designation is part of public records, so if you, in the process of buying your home, if you had contacted either city or county land use staff or planning staff, they could have told you what was going on, but the developer is under no obligation, I believe, to provide information about proposals that may or may not come to fruition, or even get as far as a planning commission. Home values, I've been on the council now for 11 years, and I know that Dave has been on planning commission and council far larger than that, and virtually every project that comes forward that has opposition, there's always, part of the discussion is about how it's going to kill the land values and the home values of the properties adjacent to it. And in my 34 years of living here, the only time I've seen a significant drop in house values, those coincided with either national or Bay Area recessions, and were not associated with any particular project. So while there may be people that feel that their house has dropped in value, a buyer might not agree with you, and might be willing to pay the full price. Having said all that, I too am concerned that this is currently agricultural use land. It is land that is open, it's open for grazing and other agricultural uses of that type. And it's land that's obviously used by the wildlife, and it has an appearance of the land that's adjacent to it, so it's not chopped from the adjacent properties, and shows a completely different appearance and use. So that agricultural use plays a role in the appearance of the open space in that valley, and to me, that does have value. Along those lines, I'm really concerned that breaking urban growth boundary for this purpose is not good policy. There may be other purposes that do make good policy, but I don't think this is one of them. To me, the most significant issue that has been brought up is the water. And I'm very sympathetic to the people who live in that valley who do not have municipal water service. They don't have East Bay MUD, they don't have DSRSD, Double San Ramon Services District. They have wells, or they have trucks, and that's where they get their water. And the project that is proposed that would use as much as 45 acre-feet per year, and an acre-foot of water is one heck of a lot of water, versus the 27 acre-feet of water that's available through rainwater and subsurface sources, to me would have an unacceptable impact on the Tri-Valley wells of the existing ranches and farms and residences. It's ours to either dig deeper wells, or pay for trucking and more water. And I think that that's an unacceptable situation. Last thing, and I think Mr. Turferson brought it up, and that's possibly the most important thing you'll take away from this meeting tonight, and that is, if this is passionate for you, if this is really burning in your heart and your soul, you need to attend the county meetings just like you attended our meeting. Coming here and telling us tonight, should we pass a resolution against this, is a flea on an elephant. If you really want to take action, and you think it's important, you and your neighbors need to participate in whatever happens at the county level. That's where the decision will be made. County Planning Commission will make a decision, and only if it is appealed by either the Board of Supervisors or citizens, will it ever come before the county board of supervisors. So this is burning in your soul, and if you're here at 10 o'clock tonight, or after 10, and not the people who got here at 7:30 and have since long gone, obviously you feel more passionately, go to the county. Log on to the county website, find out when their meetings are going to be held, and participate. But I'm in agreement with the speakers so far this evening, and agree that we should be withdrawing our support for this cemetery.
The other part I want to add on, as I write in a letter, Phil, I'd like for the county maybe to clarify their use of agricultural land, because right on any agricultural land that they use primarily, or could use for a cemetery. And I think it's pretty fair to not just Tassahara, but any place that is zone agricultural, that the county make a statement that they withdraw that, and they clarify which areas perhaps would be suitable for cemeteries, so people who have agricultural land next to them don't always get any fear about all of a sudden one day a cemetery. I think that would be something I'd like to have the county look at and reflect upon. Phil, did you have a comment to make or a motion?
I would like to move that we, as the city council and as representatives of residents of San Ramon, do the following. We write a letter to the county of Contra Costa, saying that based on the views of the residents expressed in a series of open meetings, and the information gathered and presented to the city of San Ramon and its residents, do not support the concept of a commercial cemetery in the Tassahara Valley. I would further propose that we do this based on a series of points, concerns for grossly inadequate groundwater availability, and the growing public and legislature's awareness of the severity of this problem. The fact that a commercial cemetery would have an irreversible destructive impact on the agricultural character of the Tassahara Valley and its residents, that the significant level of residential growth in the nearby area leading to greater public awareness of Hidden Valley open space and the terrible impact that this project would have on the enjoyment of this San Ramon open space is a great concern, and that there were further, inadequate traffic studies and environmental impact report with no recognition of unique triad characteristics of a procession, of funeral procession. I don't know if my colleagues agree with that last point, but I would certainly, I have heard support for those other areas.
To clarify what you're asking, is it both to direct, that we withdraw our support of the resolution, and we would direct staff to generate a letter that I would sign?
Yes.
I'd love to ask Mr. Sacks, is it more appropriate for us to draft a letter to the planning commission of the county and the board of supervisors? Or is it more appropriate for us to come up on a resolution that states the points in terms that Mr. Alone stated?
I think the better choice is to do what Mr. Alone suggested. I know it was a done by a resolution in 2005, didn't have to be. The resolution has no legal effect. And so the object tonight is to relay the opinions of this council, not what happened nine years ago, that's really completely wrong. So a motion, that we are to sign a letter that would contain the points that were listed in the motion, I think we would proceed to do.
Is it appropriate or necessary for us to withdraw, or rescind, or otherwise reject the previous resolution?
No, because you can't repeal history. Nine years ago, the city council said, this is the way we feel. That's history. The important thing is the way that you feel.
Okay, thank you. There needs to be a second for us to continue the conversation.
Oh, second, Mr. Alone's motion.
Okay, I think Mr. Perkins got it in first, Harry. Okay, so it's been first, moved and second, discussion on the motion.
Could I ask Mr. Alone if you wouldn't mind reading it?
Based on the views of the residents expressed in a series of open meetings, and on the information gathered and presented, the city of San Ramon and its residents do not support the concept of a commercial cemetery in the Tassahara Valley. This is based on, one, concerns for grossly inadequate groundwater availability, the growing public and legislature's awareness of the severity of this problem. Two, the fact that a commercial cemetery would have an irreversible destructive impact on the agricultural character of the Tassahara Valley and its residents. Thirdly, tearing down massive bridge lines and building structures that are completely out of character with the surrounding area's rural nature. Fourthly, the significant level of residential growth in the nearby area has led to greater public awareness of the Hidden Valley open space and the terrible impact that this massive project would have on the enjoyment of San Ramon's open space. And I'll leave it at those four in terms of, I have three others, but I think that...
Were you okay with those four points?
Yes. In the first sentence, I would like to add, you say the residents of San Ramon, and you can read that phrase there?
Sure. Based on the views of the residents expressed in a series of open meetings, of its residents, I guess. And on the information gathered and presented, the city of San Ramon and its residents do not support the council...
Okay, I'd like you to change that to the city council and its residents, rather than the city.
Okay.
The city itself doesn't have a view, the council has a view, the residents... The city itself doesn't have a view, the council has a view, the residents have a view, but the city itself doesn't have a view.
Fair enough. I have three other items that I was basing this on. Significant growth in the availability of cemetery space in the surrounding areas, while at the same time an increase in cremations versus burial. The inadequate traffic studies and the environmental impact report with no recognition of the neat traffic characteristics of a funeral procession, and our desire to, and that this project would likely lead to further speculative development in the area.
I'm okay with the additional three.
This will be a letter, but just to clarify, so this will be a letter that you sign on the county council and the mayor's office?
Yes, sir.
And this would be entered into the, it would be sent to the county planning commission?
The county board of supervisors.
That's what I was going to say, this is see for the supervisors.
The planning director, the planning director will get a copy of that, and we'll find out an injunction.
It's a move, it's been seconded. We've had some discussion, is there any other concerns, additions, corrections? Seeing none, all those, I'm not paying attention here.
Do you want to have a roll call vote?
Sure, we have a roll call vote. Does anybody call for that? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hudson?
I'm standing.
Councilmember Alone?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sax?
Yes.
Mayor Clarkson?
Yes.